We should be the judge of that.
So you want me to see me in my jammies?
No.
No.
Come on.
Okay, Commissioners, welcome. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington online and over to Vice Chair Fai.
Thank you, Evan. I'm gonna gavels us in as Chair Harrington does. So calling this work session to order. And Chair Harrington, we see you. Can you hear us? Right. And the full board is here in the room. Chair Rogers, welcome. Commissioner Paris, Commissioner Jerry Willie, and myself, and then Chair Harrington's online. All right, and first agenda. Molly Rogers and Erin Doyle, ready for our favorite subject, Supportive Housing Services Discussion. And, um, uh, grace. Draft assistant chair passes around two documents. Everyone should have two documents, one orange and one red sheet. Also in your emails. Molly and Erin, take away.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fai, and Commissioners in this chair is not how I would set it up, but I'm gonna move on. We have been working on this-
You can wait if you wanna fix your chair. And we want you to be comfortable. This is gonna be-
Oh, there they are.
Okay, there you go.
The handles to move. Um, thank you for your patience. This has been a lot of work over a lot of days to work as quickly as possible using a variety of data sources, um, and just eventually trying to stop and focus in on what it is that we needed to convey to your board about what is happening with the Supportive Housing Services and the financial piece of the conversation. Uh, so two big things. There's been an updated revenue collection forecast and an ongoing conversation about potential scenarios for how the revenue that is collected under the SHS tax would come out to the counties. And in, in that process of trying to be timely and thoughtful about what it means to do a reform and change the financial structure, what it takes to kind of create a, a system that allows people to transition from the streets and into permanent supportive housing in Washington County for the least amount of money and remain comprehensive, maybe a sort of version of best. So we're gonna walk through what the collection forecast looks like and then talk about what an ascent, those essentials might the essentials as the SHS team has discussed and what that costs in actuality. And then we'll dive into, based on Metro's sharing of the numbers, what the scenarios look like for Washington County and those further impacts. So we'll start with oh, we're gonna start with this chart, because this summarizes all the things we just talked about. Right now, as your board is aware, you adopted a fiscal year 24, 25 base budget of $115 million using the SHS revenues we were forecasted to get in the 23 forecast. On the fourth, Metro released an updated forecast, the 2024 forecast, and it adjusted not just future forecasting, but the forecast for this budget year, dropping Washington County share down to $98.7 million. In the math that Molly and her team have put together from 115, that's a $16.4 million loss to Washington County within this budget here.
Thank you.
In trying to decide what we have in previous slides, shows, and conversations with your board called the right size, we are now targeting it into the essential system. And essential is not meant to say that this is the full system that can serve everyone, but this is essential to what it takes to create a comprehensive proportional system, trying to meet the current goals of the SHS measure as it relates to population A. And then looking at Metro's version of the math, um, what their scenarios for the reduction would be under their proposed reallocation. And it varies depending upon which scenario you're looking at, and we'll get into the details of the scenarios a little bit later in the PowerPoint. But it's either 90 or 80 million dollars to Washington County based on their, the information they provided on the 22nd of November and their work session information that they provided to the Metro Council on the 25th. This does not reflect an update related to the updates on the forecast. And because there's about 16 different ways to do comparisons, the comparison that Molly and I landed on about 30 minutes ago was that 90 to 80 million dollar loss when we're looking at the same-
That's, that loss is lost.
That reduction to 90 to 80 million dollars loss is equal to about 32 to 42 million dollar when looking at fiscal year 27, I, um, or fiscal year 26 slash 27, compared to taking what we know as the base budget, so that top line, based on 2023 forecasts, plus just the 3% annual escalator. So if we just use what comes shorthand and in a lot of people's, um, just inflation. But 3% is the annual escalator. So that's where that 32 to 42 million dollar comes from. If we took from the forecast, that number would be different. Um, if we took from the second forecast, that number is also different. So this is how we slice this bread. It's a 32 to 42 million dollar loss in what we were expecting to get in the fiscal year 27. So this chart is the numbers to help walk us through. So if there's anyone who ever asks you a question about what does this mean financially for this county, this is the chart, and it's been a lot of work, um, to get here, and it's still not known because we're dealing with forecasts and we're dealing with a lot of different versions of similar but slightly adjusted scenarios. So this is where we landed.
Do we have the information on the base budget for the years prior to 24, 25?
We have provided that in previous slide decks, so we would have to pull, uh-
I would just like to-
Part of the challenge is in the previous years, we did do, we, we present a budget that does combine a portion of the carryover and, and um, a base budget, and we just moved more towards introducing the concept of a, of a base budget. Um, so that's partly why, um, we're including that here. We hadn't done that in the past, so we'd have to do a little bit more frankly right-sized work.
The reason I'm asking for that is that it gives you the look of the entire length of the program. And that's, that's why I was thinking that it would be helpful to me in talking to others. So I, it doesn't have to happen right away, but.
Okay. Erin, can I ask you?
Sure.
I really like this slide you presented here. What you ground in us is the number you said if somebody asks you what the risk cuts are, what you pointed is the yellow portion of this slide.
Under the scenarios that Metro has put forward, the ones discussed in the Willamette Week article that have been discussed at the Metro, this is the numbers and those are, is that yellow box. Yeah.
Yeah. And, okay. And the, the 30 to 42 million is the cut from the 115 million starting off.
Plus the 3% accelerator, so we're-
Each year.
So that we can do the fiscal year to fiscal year comparison.
That's been a challenge is everyone, we had to right-size to fiscal year. Right side, yeah. Based on all the different ways to escalate it out. Yeah, this lays out there how severe is the pain for Washington County.
Yep. To talk about the forecast, um, as your board knows, we use the forecast to decide what our budget is. And the forecast is usually presented in the mid-range, but they have a low and a high. We based our 24, 25 or fiscal year, this fiscal year's budget off of the 23 forecast. We have now gotten an updated one that shows a significant reduction in the middle of the fiscal year. So significant that it means that there has to be a conversation with your board about cuts in this fiscal year. And I believe Molly and her team are coming back next week to have that-
Yep.
The next step in that conversation.
And that's, that forecast is only around the, the tax base right now.
The current tax base.
It doesn't include any reductions in tax revenues.
They have not been, they don't show the model, but yes, we assume.
Any, any reductions we would be making this fiscal year would be because the forecast did not align with collected revenues.
Thank you.
And they're, yes, exactly. It does not, right now, include any of the reform package scenarios.
So we have two, I just wanna ground it to separate conversations. We have pending reductions because the forecast came in below what was anticipated. I also wanna highlight that, um, income tax is known to be a volatile funding source. So this should, this is not to be unexpected, and especially since we have a short experience of collection of this tax. So that's Conversation A. Conversation B, an impact is the potential reform, right? So I would suggest as we move forward, we keep, and if staff can help, Conversation A is reductions due to the forecast. B is the reform.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, and so let's just look at the chart. This chart comes from the information, this is Metro's chart. This is their forecast and the information that they have publicized to their council, to the SHS Oversight Committee, and with, um, the what does FRT stand for?
The Financial Review Team.
The Financial Review Team, which consists of our, the CFOs for all the counties and Metro. What the biggest takeaway here is, uh, the bottom of each separate chart is the new updated revenue forecast. So the one that says Washington, that's where that 98.7 million dollars on the above chart comes from. That is this fiscal year. The difference between fiscal year, or 2003's forecast and 2004's forecast overall is 51.4 million dollars, which leads to a reduction from 115 to 98, or 16 million dollars to Washington County in this fiscal year, which is, we won't, uh, which is a huge impact. And then carrying that forward over the next couple of fiscal years, it appears that Metro is not seeing a huge amount of growth in this resource, um, but some. So the reductions year over year within the forecast remain pretty sizable. Overall, puts us at a much lower trajectory of, um, available than to budget. We believe this is the midline of their forecast, not the low end or the high end. But it's not great for the next five years, and they only forecast out overall for five years for to compare to November of 2023. Happy to answer questions to the best of my ability. If you ask me how anyone forecasts, I will say magic. Um, it is an economist's world. The methodology is not, uh, shared out. Um, it's different than what the state's most recent revenue forecast looks like, but that's because it's focused on what's happening here in the region. And what information goes into that is not 100% clear. Any questions on this forecast?
Pardon me for my edification. Can you tease out the numbers by counting?
It, the, the, on the underneath partners?
I mean, the collections.
Oh, the collections? Oh, the collections.
I know it's the revenue, or the expenditure part, the revenue part.
Trying to remember.
Not sure of that.
Pardon me?
I was not sure of that.
Chair, I think you might have dug into all the reports, so.
Best, they've, they have accounted for what they can account for. So the forecast information, uh, indicates that there's approximately 24% in Washington County, but they're only able to determine that 77% of the revenue, uh, came from our three regions. So some is paid for by folks living out of state or elsewhere in the state. So I, I did the simple math to calculate that if we redistributed the other 23% of the revenue based upon that, uh, distribution that they're able to reflect, then Washington County would get 31% versus 33 and a third.
So, based on the information, uh, we have-
It's inexact science.
Yes. Any other questions on the forecast? If not, I will turn it over to Molly to start talking about how her team decided what is a formerly known as right size, but realistically isn't right, it is what is essential.
Yeah, the, the team, as we started thinking through all the various drivers that are affecting our numbers, not just this budget, but the potential impacts, it was realizing that there were a lot of things still in motion and a lot of projects that we have, um, put underway and some projects that we've been working on. And really, what we needed to figure out is when the dust all settles, we have built out our full system, what is the ongoing operating needs to sustain the level of commitments to ensure that we don't actually pull people out of housing that we've moved into housing or shelter. And so part of that is us all understanding, um, all the various moving parts that have gone into us building it from a COVID response level of a system, and then be able to utilize, uh, some of the COVID response, but able to get more sort of motel leases, um, shelters on, online, able to get, um, more pods online and all the various ways we utilize additional state funds and, and federal funds. Where does this all end up landing when we, um, sort of close out some of our temporary solutions and we have everything built out in a permanent way? We also need to recognize that we are in a constrained environment with the new forecast, and we wanted to, we were gonna have to be resetting essentially our base. And what does, how do we reset a base that continues the reflection of the priorities of the voters of our population A and B, as well as, um, understanding we have enough proportionality of a balanced system so that we have throughputs where people show up and are unsheltered. We have places for people to go, and then we can line them up with other, uh, different sort of shelter options and housing options over time. And this base, new base, uh, if you will, it allows us to move forward with the capital investments that have, we've, we've done on contingent awards. And we've built into what it would look like if those, all those access centers, all those shelters and the transitional housing and the, um, ongoing supportive housing is actually, um, is built out. And we had to do this in a way that gets us to compare to our next year's budget numbers so we can do apples to apples comparison. Because that's part of the challenge with all the numbers is we're bringing the, as we bring the base down, I need, we need to make sure we can have operations of, of ongoing of those buildings that we're putting online over the next three years. So we're not building something that we can't actually operate. So with, so without further ado.
So you're actually looking at a reduction of like 15%, maybe 16% from the, to match this forecast, the, the reality, right?
So, so full, full disclosure, we did this analysis prior to us getting the new forecast.
Okay.
This is independent.
Okay, so this is without that 16 million dollar drop.
This is, this was, we will get to that in, in a second of how those two match up.
Okay.
But it was meant to say, we, we know we're gonna, there's, if there is a re, uh, reform package, what is the essential system that we can live with that doesn't completely unravel us not be able to pull back on housing assistance that we have supported folks. But now, since the two have sort of converged between the new forecast and how we're building, uh, how we need to look forward in a sustainable fashion, we are, we're now looking at the two together, and we will get to that in a few slides.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's, that's it. The timing has been
Interesting.
We've been, timing has been interesting, a bit of a coincidence, um, uh, but they are converging here soon. So this is a chart to the extent, has high level as I could possibly get to, well, um, Justin, the team have done it, have done variations of this. But just to give you all a high level, this is the system we have been, we have today that over, over the last three years, that we have been able to do additional eviction prevention coming out of COVID to match what some of those federal resources were coming in. We did do with some additional helping folks get move-in assistance. Those have been primarily for Pop B. We have built, we have some, uh, we have, we have outreach teams. We are working, um, towards making commitments. Our current system is hoping for four access centers, and we have liaisons, um, that help us connect with other, uh, systems of care. We have shelters that we've been planning for in our work plans. We've got, uh, three pod villages. We've got three project turnkey motel shelters, and we have additional budget for our inclement weather response. We've got different, um, housing solutions for Pop Bay. Typically, that's, uh, some supportive housing that are what we call project-based, and then we have what we call more tenant-based housing, uh, case management with our regional long-term rent assistance. Right now, we only have 87 supportive housing units that are fully operational. We created a goal of 500, so you'll see when we think about, uh, the fully built-out system will show shifting between our tenant-based approaches and our project-based approaches. And then, um, and then similarly with Pop B, it's very similar in that we've done, uh, we've been able to have, uh, because additional resources for rapid rehousing. That's sort of typically a time-limited amount of assistance for people who are not chronically homeless, but are needing, uh, essentially more, it's more than just economic, but they need some additional, um, supports in their life to kind of get to a more self-sufficient place within a two-year period. So generally, those are also tenant-based ARLA, and we also have some, um, move on vouchers for folks who are more stabilized, and we can kind of graduate them from that, uh, level of intensive case management, and they are self-sufficient after that. And so then, this is sort of roughly the number, these households are a little bit, uh, household counts. It's trying to, um, are kind of more estimates of what we have under contract. It's not necessarily a reflection of exactly the number of households we're serving right now. But it's what we put out into the community with our community-based organizations. Um, and so that is, these are all things that we will, uh, you'll see in some shifts over time. We have system coordination efforts. We have coordinated entry. We talked about this before. We help support city liaisons. Um, we're doing additional resources to make sure folks are, uh, doing data quality assurance. That's representing about 5% of the system, and then administration, we're capped at 5%. So you see that laying out. You have 120, overall system right now is about 121, and that's a portion of the carryover and of course our base budget because we were spent, essentially budgeting our eviction prevention out of our carryover. Um, and so we will get to that in a little bit of what does the ongoing system really looks like. I, we've talked about this here. I have included in, in this essential system some portion, uh, much reduced, but, um, continuing to do some eviction prevention out of the base budget.
And how much was the carryover?
The carryover, what, as a-
Numbers.
Well, we actually have a slide on that as well, um, but, uh, our last time we talked about this is Au- August 31. It was 96 million. And eviction prevention was about, that was coming out of that. So it was about 12 something. This adds in some of the staffing time that goes into that.
Okay, so the carryover amount that's represented here is about 12 million?
Uh, uh, roughly, uh, so 15, it's, there's, um,
It's okay.
There's some things that we had to round up, so, yeah, or round down. But there's, um, so a portion of that, but just assume the 115 is the base budget. And then we've, we're able to do some of the, some of, some of these pieces. But trying to give, I, what I'm also trying to elevate is sort of proportionality. We got housing solutions that right here is representing about 57% of the total system. As we build into more permanent solutions with all the projects underway, we'll see that as a higher percentage of the system. Next slide. So what, what did it take? What sort of assumptions did we make? And I just wanted to be clear, this is work that we, staff has really done, and we haven't had a chance to really work with our Solutions Council yet. We have been, um, really trying to understand, um, all the various moving pieces of this overall sort of system since a lot of things we did on a temporary basis, like Pod Villages, what happens with those on an ongoing basis. So this is a, um, this is a reflection of some of these assumptions we've made, but it will be, we need more time with our partners to really land on what makes sense going forward. But trying to look at a sustainable system that can understands the right inflows and outflows of homelessness. It also honors and meets the original goals by continuing that deeper focus on Pop A at that, um, around the, uh, three-fourths per, um, reflection of funding and still one-fourth for Pop B. What I've gone through with this exercise is a lot of the, uh, interventions we do, it's fairly arbitrary if it's Pop A or Pop B. When someone shows up for shelter, we, we serve them. And then, so really in my mind, it should be, we should be looking at that, those permanent housing solutions we're building, are we reflecting that kind of 25, 75% split for those? That's why it gets that, our, uh, those percentages kind of look skewed really, really quickly. We have been able to be more responsive using tenant-based approaches with both rapid rehousing and ARLA. As we build out infrastructure, we will pivot and transition that assistance to more what we call project-based assistance. That gives, um, us an ability to know that folks who are moving into apartments have the rent assistance that they have so that we can meet people where they're at, even if they have zero income. And then, of course, they, then they have, um, ongoing, ongoing affordable housing. We will have, based on, um, uh, what, with, with, of course, the new, the new forecast and, um, any potential outcome of reform package, we'll start accelerating some of those plans we had for, say, project turnkey, where we're building out shelter beds. Well, maybe we need to look at, um, doing that conversion or some of those tear downs sooner if we can leverage, uh, state funds. It also, um, the, the various, this new system looks at making sure we have enough emergency shelter options for law enforcement. We want cities to be able to continue to, uh, be able to enforce our time, place, and manner policies. We want to keep our commitments with our cities and our service providers that are, are taking on risks and, and, uh, using capital investments to build out their own infrastructure. And we want to maintain this, those sort of throughputs and the proportionality of a balanced system so that we don't get people stuck. So we try to balance, um, there's some reduction, obviously, we don't have everyone contracted with ARLA, all the contracts and someone living with that voucher, but at the same time, we need to have enough vouchers in the system so we have a place for folks to go out of the shelters. And obviously, every system of care, we, we need some kind of built-in adjustment of flexibility because we're not gonna have this all completely, um, you know, completely calibrated every single year in a year out. We need to be able to do that over time. Next slide.
Chair has a question. Her hand up.
Just wanna clarify, the previous slide said FY 24 slash 25 homeless system of care with a total cost of 121.4. Is that the current system or a rebalanced system? And it really pertains to this slide. Is this that right-sized, rather, system at, at the new forecast, or is it the current approved budget today?
Previous slide shows what is in the current budget of our, of what we're funding today. The next slide will show the-
This slide right here.
Um, no, we've got one more slide after this.
Well, I think, Molly, correct me if I'm wrong, but this slide shows the thought process to get from the previous slide and into the next slide. So these are the decision points around how to do that right sizing, quote unquote.
That's right. This is just the intro slide to when we get to the rights of the essential, um, system.
Thank you.
Without, with, so, without further ado, here we go. That's a great, great segue. So you see here, we significantly reduce the number of households supported by eviction prevention and move-in assistance from 1,700 to 1,000. Um, it's essentially halving the amount that we're putting out, a little bit more than half. Um, we're also doing some reductions in outreach and access. We want to still see, but this is a system that still assumes four access centers, but does have some reduction in our overall shelter capacity. And that's based on these different moving pieces that we bailed out with um some of the hotel voucher-ing, as well as some of the project turnkeys that are serving as shelters, but could be converted to either um uh transitional or, or permanent affordable housing. It's maintaining an inclement weather shelter approach. It's um maintaining two of our three pod villages. Pop A, you'll see, um, it's sort of recognizes that we are building towards a five-hundred project-based supportive housing goal, but also maintains uh the, of course, it's been a very effective approach to also have a tenant-based ARLA approach for, with, tied with uh housing case management for pop A. You add those two together, that's our sixteen-fifty that we've been working towards as our overall goal, the sixteen-fifty of pop A that was tied to the original measure. It's roughly fifty percent of the total system. So it shows our, where our values are, it shows our priorities. We also recognize the need to have some pop B permanent solutions, um rapid rehousing at a, at a much reduced level, but also some tenant-based ARLA and some move-on vouchers to support around six hundred households. Uh, and then, if you, then, of course, we essentially really do take the biggest reductions in our system coordination, and um we maintain that five percent in administration. This is assuming, um, again, back to that uh comment around what fiscal year are we in, in any point in time in our costs? This is looking at a twenty-five, twenty-six uh future state. So uh, had a little bit of a sense of our, what went into our decision-making, just uh at a high level. We, uh, as I mentioned, we're, we're moving out of a COVID emergency response, so less eviction prevention, more around our permanent capacity. Um, you'll see a shifting in where we're doing tenant, from tenant-based to project-based approaches. And you'll see the biggest, frankly, reductions on our pop B that we've been able to support, which made sense. We take pop A and the amount of supportive housing to build out has taken us more time. It takes acquisition and new construction, uh, it takes um a deeper level of care, and we were able to serve frankly more pop B populations at the same time um during um this, while we're ramping up in our infrastructure. So that will all be sort of reshifted. Um, let's see, and then we are going to be doing some reductions in our administrative costs and um and we're making a recommendation, some of the uh programming that we've done could serve in a more regional capacity. Your board could make a recommendation to Metro, these are capacity and um solutions that Metro could take on under their admin cap. Things like a risk mitigation pool that could be done that, uh, on a regional basis. Data quality assurance that they could be the ones funding as part of our data sharing agreement. Uh, we've done um capacity building and other training and technical assistance. They're building out, they're, they had a whole presentation on their training and technical assistance, they could take on those costs for us. Um, and of course, um workforce and training is a, we believe is, it should be a part of our essential system. We just can't, right now, it could be something that they could do at a regional basis, and then make sure all, the whole region can support a workforce component.
Can you kind of address that a little bit? Work Systems is, obviously, the one that we know of is Washington, Mo- Mo- in Portland. Clackamas County has their own program, so how would that be a regional solution when you've got a divided system?
Well, it, it's, um, I, I, I guess I didn't realize Work Systems doesn't support Clackamas, um, so
I, I think it's similar to the way we consider a regional solution by working with three counties. There's a presumption that there'll be coordination, and it, the point here is that Metro takes on the responsibility through their budget.
Right.
And Metro can set up a regional system, so they would contract with both Work Systems and the provider in Clackamas County. So instead of saying, we've got it, we've got to do it in Washington County with Work Systems, and Mo- Mo County's got to do it in, in their county's budget with Work Systems, and Clackamas has to do it in their system. Instead, it says, we will turn this into a regional basis, and Metro has the staffing and the funding to work with both entities at the same time.
So it might be better stated if it just said workforce development needs.
Yes, yes.
Instead of the title of the uh work
Yeah, I, we wanted to, just because we, we did talk before that we are supporting Work Systems and through a pilot project of their career, and that would be one of the areas we would, just to absorb, we have to have a conversation with them to absorb our sixteen-point-four billion.
Those who will remain, I would simply say that as, as future progresses, uh, there's a number of organizations who don't necessarily want to put their entire future in, in, in a metro model. And so uh, Washington County does not have to be part of the Work Systems, as we know it. We, we have our own programs, just like Clackamas County. But I, I think, just a word of caution, as you go down the road, you might want to say, uh, monitor that closely. I find that you have fewer services and less kinds of services, and present model we have now with an independent Work Systems Group. And I heard your definition, which is a good one, that's what I, I'm always cautionary on, on that uh, regional model, I think others have
I see what you're saying, thank you for that clarification. Mainly, we're trying to emphasize that this essential new system does assume five million dollars of, of contracts that would be absorbed by, we could recommend to Metro, they, they could um consider it's something continuing, so we don't have to, so those systems don't have to take a reduction.
That makes sense.
Out of their, out of their admin
All of them do.
Just more of a transfer. So what I did, what we did do is look a little bit about proportionality, are we, just a little bit of a gut check, are we balancing the initial goals of S H S in this or essential system? If you look at how we're paying for all the programming, so if you take out the systems coordination and administration portion of the budget, we have about seventy-two percent of our funds going towards permanent solutions, and twenty-eight percent going towards shelter, access referrals, um, and non-permanent, I'm calling non-permanent solutions. That, to me, felt like we're on the right track, but um, and then, and then similarly, we, I looked at the proportionality of those housing solutions, so not, not, not looking at our shelter or our access centers or outreach, because we don't know who's showing up in each of those, but we look at the capacity of housing that we can intentionally invest in. We, um, and this was just, again, based on us make, making some shifts. Right now, the, that current toggling would be about seventy-three, twenty-seven. So that's very close to the seventy-five, twenty-five that um the measure laid out for us. Excellent. Okay, so this is where the two conversations converge. Independent, so this is what made this past week really interesting, is we were doing this analysis, um, trying to understand what we could live with, and then the forecast um came out. And I was a little, I was shocked frankly by how closely day-aligned. Um, so if we, if we take our right-size, um, our essential system at a one oh three, and we assume, we did, I did, we did do different escalators frankly than three percent, we don't believe three percent is realistic in our homeless system of care. Um, we made assumptions based on four percent of a programming escalator and a seven percent of a rent escalator. So we looked at the whole system and which ones are really supporting rent. It comes out with a blended rate of five-point-five. Um, and then we escalated out our, our system over the next five years. And then we were able to overlay them just yesterday with how the forecast is, um, the new forecast was laying out the revenue for the next five years. You can see that we're very close. Um, obviously, these are all, both of these are projections, a lot of moving pieces, a lot of variables that go into this. Um, but, and then, of course, you know, we assume a little bit more in a, a central system in twenty-six, twenty-seven than what uh Metro has forecasted, so those would be something we, conversations around, you know, that would be when you use your reserves or you use your carryover um fund balance. And then um they do assume a little bit more of a jump up in twenty-eight, in their forecast.
Just my edification is, is the difference between projected and what you were forecasting. I mean, the metro model and what you're projecting, where would that difference come from in your mind? You, you said carryover. Are you looking at any general fund backfill?
No. No.
And are you fully costed, meaning, pick on your salary, are you a, a part of, of this program? You have any part of it in the general fund?
It's just S H S.
So your salary's all?
Oh, you mean, and the hous- and the Housing Authority?
Yeah. Yeah, Housing Authority.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we're, we, the only general funds uh that we receive as a housing department is federal match dollars.
That's very
Dominant.
Dominant.
Yeah.
And that's true of all employees, analysts, accountants who might
Correct. Yeah.
So it's pretty, pretty pure, standalone. So if this, if this whole measure were to go away tomorrow, uh, it wouldn't, I mean, the future boards would have to make some decisions what they do, but it's, it's not impacting any deficits we might have in the general fund.
Um, no, and I, I want to just take the whole board back, yeah, um, into some history. Uh, we did use general fund prior to the receipt of our first uh payment from Metro. Uh, we repaid that general fund, an inter-fund loan, um, with the revenues received through the S H S measure. There is no general fund expenditure contemplated in the scenarios that you've seen, or in this year's existing budget, or the prior budgets, with the exception of year one, when we needed that startup, so we could start building the program before the revenues received. Excellent.
Before you, before you leave that, that slide, um, it looks like the, it, the culmination here, what I'm seeing is that eviction prevention is the area that takes the biggest hit across the board, is that, is that correct?
And rapid rehousing, right.
Okay, and we, we do, we are aware that eviction prevention is one, obviously, uh reduces the impact of, and needs
Inflow.
Of everybody else, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just pointing that out here as we move forward.
Yep, that's why we continue to have some base level of eviction prevention going forward.
Right, but it was halved.
Yep, exactly, it's not, yeah. It's, um, yeah, I appreciate, it can have, we're, we're, it's obviously not, we know it's not enough.
I understand, I just was, I just raising that issue.
Okay, this slide is, oh, the chair has a question.
You're still on mute, chair.
Sorry, didn't click the right thing, back on the previous slide. So um, just for uh being prepared, because Metro has drilled the point home in multiple meetings, that they're really sticking to the zero-point-three percent. So that would of the, the fall twenty-twenty-four, five-year forecast has that three percent in, but your total forecasted expenditures don't. So there's a further widening of that gap due to those differences in the seven and four percent escalator.
Much like how measures five and fifty work.
Yeah.
Yep, the three percent will cause compression over time.
Okay, okay, I got that scheme, thank you.
Uh, this slide is all the work we've been actually doing to help build out our supportive housing pipeline and to meet our five-hundred goal. A lot of, some of these projects are, four of them are in operations. Um, some of these are affordable housing bond-funded, some of these have gotten to financial closing, some of them have not. Some of them are in, in still pre-development stage, and based on conversations we've had with those respective cities. But this shows that we have a plan to build out the vast majority of our five-hundred goal with a re- uh, with an outstanding thirty-four that have yet to be realized. And we could benefit from an additional fifty-two million of capital resources um that if too much diverted, and if, if we're too restrictive in a reform package, that we are then um having to compete for that fifty-two million, or it's bifurcated from our decisions around rent assistance and services, which this model shows that um we'd be committing about eighteen million of our base towards our supportive housing goal. So our, our essential system assumes we can build out our supportive housing pipeline, because that is the permanent solution to pending chronic homelessness, um, is housing with support services attached and an ability for them to live there without having, um, to, to not have to pay rent at sixty percent AMI um rent levels. So that is um just, this is just a depiction of, you know, disruptions in a system or creating uncertainty puts some of these projects frankly at risk, or um it, it may, it also ensures uh that us as a coordinating body to work with each of these partners, to understand that when we make commitments and, and, and capital and investments, we have the resources to, to move people into those homes um and have them stay there. Back to, oh, carryover, we talked briefly about carryover, um, we both talked about um how we had made commitments and we made assignments to uh put out our, the ninety-six million of one-time-only carryover funds. So again, like, that's always a point in, a point in time. We've been very um busy since this Au- August eight to essentially assign and commit the vast majority of this carryover fund balance. Um, so as we have talked about before, a portion of this was an eviction prevention, a lot of it was eviction prevention and capacity building. Uh, we have shelters, um, our access centers, and our transitional housing that you all just approved, um, just in the last one to two weeks.
And if you can't read the colors on the slide, Molly just read them basically starting at noon and moving clockwise around the circle with eviction prevention in that brown color, that light blue color being capacity building, then shelter, et cetera.
Next slide, fast forward to, oh, sorry, chair, you're on mute.
I keep clicking and getting it wrong. Just to put a finer point on it, none of these dollars are just sitting around. They are actively going through the pipeline for construction and development.
Yes, thank you, that's a perfect segue to our next slide, which is, ta-da, the red is all the funds that we have um put in motion and executed and committed. Um, yeah, granted, I, I want to be clear, some of these have been now in contingent awards, uh, such as our transitional housing and our access center. Um, but it shows that we um, we didn't commit the full amount of the fifty million of transitional housing, it was a little bit less than that, and we still have a remaining access center, and we still have hopes of finding a permanent site for um, for our pods, because we made commitments to move those every two years. So if you, if we build out our two remaining projects that essentially halves the amount of remaining carryover that we have, we could um contemplate the remain, whatever remaining we have to be used as a transition fund to do a system ramp downs that we need to do, so that we can just um uh, uh, try to mitigate the disruptions to our CBOs and to the folks we've moved into housing issues. Okay, back to you, Erin.
But are there any further questions before we move into what Metro has proposed?
So this, so we're done talking about the budget and the reforecast, is that right?
We will come back to you next week at another work session.
But today, we're done with this piece.
Yes.
And now we're moving into Metro proposal.
The Metro, we, they have called them scenarios, not a proposal, to be really clear and use their language. Um, their scenarios reallocate funding within the revenue stream, and it's a lot of words. And it's a lot of words, but I haven't seen a good graphic of how they've uh decided to do this that makes it any clearer than what I could write out in words. But essentially what they're doing um is allocating the full revenues um pouring into set buckets incrementally. And they start with a set bucket for the counties and Metro um to cover our work moving forward to establish what that scenario looks like. They did two starting points. Uh, scenario one contemplates two hundred and fifty million dollar in that million dollars in that bucket to counties starting at the beginning and cost escalating at three percent year over year. So it sets us with a, we know our next number. Um, and those revenues are completely ours as gets divided. So about a third comes to Washington County using the current distribution methodology of that two fifty. Scenario two um is starting at two hundred and twenty five. That's these are significantly lower than the reality of what we received in the first few years, but is then used to determine how much we would have in years moving forward within our collective bucket. Metro did their own math, I don't track their numbers internally, um but they would in one version of this are subject to the same three percent cost escalator. The next funding would go first into and for we think first into an affordable housing bucket and then secondarily into a city allocation bucket. And they put caps that they randomly picked for their scenario at fifty million for the affordable housing bucket and fifteen million for the cities, all the cities.
And that's that's region city.
That's regionally, the regionally fifty million for affordable housing, regionally fifteen million for all the cities. Um, and then if they have revenues beyond that, um, they said they put it into some flexible fund and we have no idea. So I call it a one-time use sort of funds because it's all dependent upon excess revenues and probably some sort of grant type process, but nothing is confirmed in anything related to that extra money. Um, in addition, those scenarios account for the tax savings to the taxpayer um in in their graphs. So the scenario assumes a tax rate starting in fiscal year twenty six uh twenty seven of nine percent for individuals or point nine percent, that's really important um number.
Yes.
Point nine percent and then transitioning a further reduction in fiscal year uh thirty one to a point seven five percent rate for individuals income taxpayers. So that's how they change the structure. These are the scenarios they put forward for our conversation and what all of the charts that Molly has presented at every previous one, when you get down to that bottom line of the chart with some really robust changes, that's approximately where we would be under this scenario, maybe actually more than where we would be under these scenarios. So this is the framework for those scenarios.
And is there any is there any indication as to how the fifty million for affordable housing would be distributed?
There has been many things proffered, um and so, no.
But that's fifty million for the region, for the region.
Correct. And I think they would, I I think one thing that we learned um from their from the economists is that a lot of, I think these assumptions were based on this view that in twenty twenty one, they thought we had an expanded tax base. But they're now re re uh praising it as an anomalous year that is twenty twenty one and then realizing that this is a different um economic um base than what they had previously. They're realizing that twenty twenty one is was more of a blip than a new base. And that's what this really was based on.
Then the second step to the funding assumptions, your last part, is your indexing. You don't say anything about indexing in there.
I might have written too fast.
I see, and so just to add that, um indexing, the number I was giving, it's indexed from one hundred to one twenty five and two hundred to two twenty five by twenty thirty, the indexing and the tax rate reduction is an eighty four million dollar hit to the total revenues.
System loss.
This is eighty four million dollars comes off the top. So you're adding a fifty million dollar affordable housing concept, a fifteen million dollar cities allocation and taking an eighty four million dollar revenue hit by twenty thirty. Make that work.
Say that one more time.
By twenty thirty, they're saying, and that's, then there's more, there's more. I hate to use a tax cut because it's not a tax cut, you're extending the tax by twenty years, it's not a tax cut.
Just call it a tax change then.
It's a tax rate reduction. Uh, the tax rate reduction is now a point that will be a point nine through twenty thirty. By twenty thirty, the combination of a point nine percent tax rate and an indexing is an eighty four million dollar re- reduction in revenue overall. Eighty four million, and I don't believe any of that is in their financial forecasts that was given to us last week.
Chair Harrington is nodding and agreeing with you. I'm sure really.
Yeah, and it's complicated and it changes every time they present it. Um, what we were originally presented is not what matched their presentation to their council and they continue to reform these scenarios and changing a lot of the assumptions. So this has been a really fun exercise in how to do math. I'm learning.
Erin, can I ask you a question about the cities portion of this? Fifteen city fifteen million for all the cities in the tri-county. Now, I'm wondering if we could demonstrate our own Washington County investment to the cities here and how much, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure cities are, cities know about this portion and then what does that mean for them? Is it a reduction, is it an increase of the investments they've been getting? So those kind of a conversation and how do we facilitate that?
We've been having those conversations at a staff level and uh the chair has been talking with the mayors. Uh, the mayors have been invited to the table and started to express their significant concerns about that in particular. Um, each county has set up their relationships with their cities very differently. Um, we have created um that coordination piece.
We have a city liaisons in three of our cities. Um, and of course, we co-fund a lot of projects. So this opens up the question of how do we reset roles responsibilities? Who is going to be ultimately in charge of operating that one shelter? If they're relying on um, is it coming out of the city portion, is it coming out of the county portion? That would all need to get renegotiated.
And I think it's also reflected in the in the numbers that Molly put forward of that coordination budget being significantly reduced has a direct impact on that coordination effort we do with the cities and we have been transparent with them. I think a lot of the mayors have started asking specific questions. Um, they will be presenting what their hopes and dreams are um this afternoon for what they would like to see funded. Some of it, it but they recognize that what is on the table, if you cut significant portions of our resources and provide them a bucket, there will be a hard conversation about transitioning our expenditures into their programming onto their bucket. And this fifteen million dollars is well below the investments, I think, we see across all three counties with all of their coordinated city programs when you total everything up. Um, and when you add the city of Portland into that measure conversation, they have a brand new city council that has very lofty goals and is gonna need a lot of money to make it happen. And they're not sure where any of those resources are coming resources are coming from, but fifteen million dollars is probably not gonna cover it.
Do you have the number of, can you give us the number of how much support we have given to our Washington County cities? That would be helpful just in context.
Oh, you mean beyond the city liaison?
Yes.
Okay, and just to be
Investments in
In those shared
Like Beaverton Shelter, that those types of things.
That'd be, I think that would that may, I would love to do that for you. And also, to be clear, our essential system assumes that our city liaisons would be then covered by the city allocation.
And just one other thing, as I heard last week that the cities don't want to be third in line. The cities want to be bumped up to second in line ahead of the four boss. So we'll see how that conversation works today in about an hour.
And the final piece of the conversation with the cities, um I think is really important. Part of this conversation as well is the impact city budgets when affordable housing comes online um within their cities. There's often an expectation that they don't take certain payments to pay for infrastructure and that these become non nonprofit and therefore untaxable and yet have service needs. So even when we build affordable housing, there's an additional like resource that cities are required. And Washington County and our unincorporated urban areas, all of those things add up to costs that have no revenue source to pay for them. So it's very complicated because we all do want to see sufficient affordable housing to house our community. But there is never going to be enough resource to do all of it. And if we do not have the supports and services in place for those hardest to serve, as Molly has said, it makes it really challenging to even build affordable housing projects. That is my soapbox, I will step back off it for a moment and talk about this. We tried to figure out how to explain where we think the money is going to be in the calculations. The chair has done a really robust um set of calculations that might look different from this. We just said, we're gonna take Metro's word
For it.
for it and use their their information that they provided publicly to estimate what the impacts would be. And of course, we're now looking at fiscal year twenty seven because we can't make anything the same fiscal year across all conversations. But essentially, scenario one is a reflection of that resetting the county total budgets to two hundred and fifty. So by fiscal year twenty seven, we'll be at ninety million dollars. Um, scenario two, which is the fourth column over, puts us at eighty million dollars. We think there's been some really rough uh
What's the difference between those scenario one?
Scenario one is two fifty, scenario two is two twenty five.
That's right.
Um, and then they added this new thing of transition, which we certainly haven't wrapped our brains around completely, but giving time before some of these uh impacts take place so we can transition
Ramp in.
magically, yeah, a ramp down um with money that we'll figure out where that comes from later. Um, so if you compare that to what they believe our fiscal year twenty four actuals are, Washington County is at ninety three million dollars, which we were actually at ninety six, but they adjusted for inflation.
Laugh at you, but anybody tells me they're gonna figure out money later, I just kinda say it's not a very good plan. Well, small amounts of money too, it's only ninety four million. Yeah, it's, yeah, it didn't matter, it didn't, pretty cash.
Um, so if you take fiscal year twenty four adjusted and look at where we would be in fiscal year twenty seven, it only looks like a three million dollar cut, but there's the ramp down that comes between. It it, so it's very hard to really suss out what the actual budget impacts. Again, this is Metro's math um that they got on the twenty fifth or twenty sixth, I can't read the date right now. Um, they just cut and paste. Where it gets even more challenging is that second rate reduction and what scenarios one and two look like with what's available.
Point seven five.
So this is, once they get to that point seven five rate
Thank you.
for individuals, scenario one and scenario two, what do they look like for our budgets, what's available? So if we just carried forward under the actuals adjusted for inflation, it's hundred and thirteen million would be what we would be getting, but under scenario one, we'd be down to one oh four and under scenario two, only at ninety two million dollars. So still well below what we expect to need as um Molly has outlined on what our expenditures needs to be. Um, that has real impacts and I'm gonna make Molly talk about them because I make her do all the depressing stuff and she makes me do all the numbers.
It's a good, it's a good
No offense, Molly, but I'm leaving.
Oh, I'm, well, fair enough, I just wanna just emphasize
If the chair is still online, Kevin or?
The chair stopped off.
Yeah, the chair has Here together as well.
Yes, I better We're leaving too.
Okay, please don't leave.
Yeah, we're leaving too.
You've had it.
All right.
We have more to discuss.
I I think just to remind Uh, what we are, this is just a conclusion slide because we've talked about a lot of these trade-offs before. Um, but as we know, we have a triage set of, we have to take further reductions from our essential. We really do start dismantling this system that we have built and we create now gaps in our overall system. We will not meet our supportive housing goals that we've set out in our Metro Metro bond, in our our S H S work plan. We don't have enough shelter capacity, it makes it harder for us to do time, place and manner. We don't have enough ARLA, we can't move people out of shelters, um and they get stuck in in there. And then, of course, we need to, um, if you bifurcate capital uh decision making from where we do the operating decision making, then we will have, will compromise our supportive housing pipeline. We put the projects that we've done contingent awards immediately at risk uh because it's it's harder to pull back in prob- programs that we've already built out than ones that have yet to be built. Um, it uh will will and we'll seek state funding to operate our project turnkey motels, um continue if we need to um ask for funding from the state to offset our losses. The question, we're not hearing that there's gonna be a lot of extra money at the state um to do that. And then it puts us, if we can't find um those resources to convert those, at some point we'd have to shut, start shutting down. Um, and then, of course, it leaves, uh forces us to not be able to have any um eviction prevention or moving funds that that really helps with that overall inflow issue, uh so we can want that. It starts dismantling the whole system we built out.
Vice Vice Chair Fai and Board, um Chair Harrington is actually on Zoom via her phone, but she is in transit to S H S. So just as an app way.
Great, great minds think alike. Kevin just sent a message, thank you.
Um, I think in this, to to go back to that clarifying, this is about the scenarios, this is not about the current forecast. These changes, this this list of implications, um so uh
Erin, could you hold on for a second, I think Commissioner Tris was gonna ask a question. Oh, uh, well, I would, thank you. I was gonna just ask if the other counties are looking at this same type of approach, just out of curiosity, or do you know?
They have been doing their versions of this, it's really essential. Um, they're they, we all call it a different thing, what we put into that set of buckets may look
What's next?
But as they have gone through with um at the table with partners to understand the impacts of scenarios, they have created very similar looking devastating cuts to their programs under the scenarios that have been presented.
They 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 talk about, they too have had budget, the um, the biggest bucket has been in our the supportive housing permanent solutions for pop A, that's where you, that's, and so they're saying if these further reductions essentially would have to go uh reducing that particular bucket, um and it would be compromising the projects that have yet to come online.
And some of them have such narrow margin, Clackamas County, for example, has such narrow margins that they have to get to our lower route faster than we do um in productions. So all of those conversations are, as you know, are still ongoing. That is where the Chair and Commissioner Willie are headed and I will sprint to um behind them shortly. Uh, but happy to answer further questions. Molly will be back next week to be talking about this forecast impacts to the budget for this current fiscal year, which will be a different conversation. I know that the Chair handed out a few documents, I think one is a really important reminder that we are still in that transition to a built system. Um, that timeline that she has presented, one of the orange sheets, it really says, we're only in year four. We have been building and we are getting there. When we are built out, that's maybe a time for this conversation. Um, and then she has done a significant amount of robust math and we're still working through all of those assumptions. Um, but, you know, the cuts are real and they are significant um under the scenarios that have been presented. And we are trying to figure out how we can get to that essential as a minimum investment in the ongoing operations of the robust programming that Molly and her team, our partners and the cities and the community-based organizations have put together. And that is our focus is to make sure that we can continue to serve this very vulnerable population that does not have other resources that can go to it, that are flexible, locally controlled and really effective at meeting people where they are. It come with a lot less strings than the federal or state dollars. That's the second soapbox I'll stand on today.
Thank you, Erin and Molly. Erin, you can leave if you have to, so you don't
Thank you.
um, get into just rush hour.
You're perfect. Your own time. Uh, but we will grill you, Molly. So you stay on and uh, I want to, I want to check in with Chair first. I think she's online on, Chair Harrington, can you hear us? And do you have any questions, comments? I don't see any hands raised, so Kevin will rely on you to.
Yeah, the Chair is unmuted. Chair Harrington, did you have any comments or questions? It's not, it's not like.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay. Okay, we'll, we'll start us in the board here. Commissioner Treese, Commissioner Rogers, the three of us.
This is evolving so quickly. I mean, it, it, we have one more board meeting this month. That's next week. Um, and then I will be gone. Jason will be here. What, what, what's your plan between now and January, where I know, I should know, seventh?
We are working, uh, we had a conversation with our uh partners, community based organizations, contracted partners just Friday. Made them aware of the new forecast. We just sent an email to all staff today about that. We, we have another meeting with our Solutions Council, I believe, um, this week or next, to help kind of shape the next steps. So we will, we've been, of course, aware that this could be um a possibility and we've been making those plans since we saw the trends happening over the summertime. It, they reckon Metro has long uh warned us it could be a fifty million dollar swing. We're at worst case scenario now. So, um, we will.
My suggestion and my vote for the next, whatever, today is versus the three, I don't know that, it was today, the tenth, yeah. Uh, the next twenty one days uh is that we allow, I guess it's Catherine and Jerry. They're trying to take the lead on this to, to negotiate for. To, to do nothing, either that or you're going to have to call another board meeting between now and.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So if needed, um, for the last two weeks of this calendar year, when we do not have a board meeting, um, if there is a need and so determined, um, the Chair does have the ability to call a special meeting. And so I'm just putting that in, in the ethos that that could happen if so determined that there's need for that.
We will be coming back to the board next Tuesday to talk about our plan for the this fiscal year impacts with a, with a memo.
Lucky this isn't four hundred years ago, we would kill the messenger. So bring up better messages. I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Commissioner Rogers, I, I, um, I appreciate the humor and sometimes we do need to have humor um as we're going through um challenges too. And just want to commend um the many staff that have contributed to this PowerPoint. Um, and you, um, and especially just Erin Doyle and Molly Rogers, who um are right now working all hours because this information, uh, we were, we were saying it was changing week by week. We're now on to day by day, if not hourly by hourly.
You know, it was mentioned that the cities are going to be participating in the meeting today. Do we know how many Washington County cities will be present?
Do not know.
Just curious. We'll hear.
Cities revved up.
And so this is question and answer time, right? Okay, so, so my question comes from yesterday when uh we were at the Oregon Business Summit and heard Governor talk about uh her goals in relationship to homelessness and um affordable housing. And it, it doesn't appear that those goals have changed. It doesn't appear in the budget, state budget, that the goals have changed. How does, uh, do you know what the interplay is between the state and the region in relationship to her budget and to her stated goals?
Yes, I, I can share with you that the Governor's highest priorities continue to be housing and homelessness over the last biennium and now. Um, it, and so she's putting forward her priorities. She had earlier um had done an executive order, she had done an executive order, I believe, two years ago and then kind of re-upped it in this movie. Executive order helped pay for some of our pod villages, the pallets, has helped with rapid rehousing. Um, and I think some other uh rent assistance programming. Now, she's shifted so that we're, we're, we're not getting a sense she's going to do another executive order. She's now trying to move it into the legislative process of budgeting. And so if the legislator, legislation doesn't keep those programs um and rent assistance going, our plan initially was to be able to offset it with SHS. Well, that may not be, as we might not be able to do that with these, kind of with the new forecast. Um, so that, that is for the interplay. Um, we have other housing authorities that were, um, because they were launching long term rent assistance similar to ARLA. We had said yes. We were one of the few housing authorities that said, yes, let's do it. Um, other housing authorities are saying, we can't, we don't want to sign up people up. If we can't be guaranteed it's funded on an ongoing basis because we don't want to pull back assistance. So it does leave us a little bit vulnerable if the LTRA um in particular and other operating, sort of operating dollars of our shelters um aren't passed in the legislature.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll just timing a couple of questions I have and then we'll let you off. You've been here for a while. You probably need a break. Molly, thank you for your presentation. And the question, um, I'm wondering, um, the carryover and the spend down, uh, the red pie chair that you showed us earlier, and there's a fourteen million left over. The project that were presented to us last Tuesday or to Tuesday before that, it's specifically transcending hope and the CCC, and then I'm forgetting the other one. Were they included in the spend down?
Uh, yeah, so we did, you, your board made a contingent awards um to the tune of forty three million across those three programs. So we did move that to more of a red after that. Um, we're assuming so that it does take, that does come out of the ninety six. So ninety six minus the forty three plus other commitments made prior to, uh, as part of our budget. It brings us down to the fourteen point six.
Right, so those projects are even though contingent, right?
Yep.
Um, I have another one last question. Now I lost this slide. I can't find the slide I. Let me see, wrote it down, this slide I had a question on. I can't find it.
Want us to go back?
Um, yeah, I'm trying to figure out what, um, what slide I was, but I do have another one, one slide that I saw now. I had a note for myself about the pop A and pop B. I think you did a really great job of reminding us the pop A and the pop B goals. Um, but I wonder the next time you come back, next week, you present to us, if you could actually just remind us the goals. I think many of us at the board know, you know, the goals. You know, how moving people from homelessness to housing is pop A. Pop B is make preventing or making sure that people do not become homelessness. But I'm wondering if you could just uh remind us these two goals that the measure had. Um, and then the, I finally find the slide I wanted. I'm wondering if you, next time, next week when you come back, share some numbers about the Affordable Housing Bond. What's in there so that we can actually make a recommendation of when should this start? Like, I don't, I don't know how much is in there so that we can time it. Many of us that care about making sure that money continues to flow into affordable housing and then also protecting them supportive housing services measure. You know, people who deal with these two goals, um, I'm wondering if you could help us know what's in the affordable housing bucket. I know the sunset is happening, but what's in there so that we can time or we can advise Metro to say, when should we start? Because we have money in affordable house, you know, so I don't really know what's happening in the affordable housing bond side of the money. Um, so if you can come back, some, some, one, one slide would be really great to, to show us so that we can advise, because I think next week when you come back, we're sort of going to have to make a recommendation, maybe, or try to nail down what Metro should do.
Yeah, I.
Proposal perhaps?
I'm not sure about where that will end up landing, but I will say, yeah, I think what I'm hearing you say is what is the completion dates of all the different project projects out there? And of course, we have our own um allocation and then there's the whole, the allocation to all of Washington County. So there are a couple of projects that are still, um, are still in pre-development sort of across the, the, across Washington County. Um, because we know our status better than frankly the other, other cities. And then, and then the timing of that, because it was meant to be a, you know, like a seven year program um of the bonds. But there are still a couple out there. Um, so we've got a couple, a couple of years left, I'm guessing, before all of those are completed.
Completely, yeah, that will.
There's, there's still a couple that haven't been fully committed yet. And then, um, and yes, it will take then a couple of years for it to get built, built out. So, yeah.
Um, I think that's all the questions I had. And I'm also wondering, maybe this is the Chair and Commissioner Willie's question of something they'll bring back. Um, but I am wondering, like, in terms of going back to the, my original question around the cities, I'm wondering if, um, how would, what will be the, in, like, the, the, how do you balance the formula for each city? Right, fifteen million is not enough and some cities are hundred thousand or more. And then there's the city of Portland, which is the same size almost as Washington County. So how do you, uh, what's Metro's vision for sort of their scenario, to use their language as Erin was suggesting? What's their scenario around setting a formula for each city?
We can ask them. More to know, I guess. I think immediately they have to figure out what they're asking. At this point, I don't, not even sure what to model anymore with the new forecast.
Yeah.
Because that's how, um, it, it's, there's too many now, too many, too many X factors, well, um, something has to give.
If you ever brought a project that you didn't know the funding, you didn't know where things are coming, they would say, what the heck are you doing? We question the leadership. That's exactly what's happening. We don't know. There's so many variables. So thank you for the job. And what can you do when you don't know? I, I do think the city is most of their issue and, and Jason, you might have a feel of that too. Uh, I talked with Travis, uh, who's Mayor of uh Crescent last week about this as well. They, they just want a voice. That, that's predominantly what it is. So the allocation of dollars is just, I guess, a way to force a voice, but a lot of this would disappear, yeah.
Yeah, um, I, Claire Moss, um, Catherine, Chair Harrington's unmuted now, if you can have her speak. So I just want to bring that, she, because she's driving, not to cut you off, Commissioner Rogers.
But, no, that's all right. Quit driving and trying to talk. That's not good.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
Is there something that you was going to say?
I just received a message to unmute the mic.
Chair Harrington, um, you have the mic. Chair, we can't hear you if you're talking. Tanya, would you text Chair Harrington back and say, we can't hear you, you're unmuted?
Oh, I, I got, uh, oh, well, so I think she's trying her best.
Oh, okay.
So she can hear us.
Yeah, Commissioner Roger, you can finish your thought and then if you can hang on one second, Molly, in case.
There wasn't anything I wanted to say, other than I, you're doing the best you can with what you have. I, I, you're just used to something being a little more baked before you start throwing it out. So it sounds like a lot of disjointed thoughts that everybody's throwing their flavor of the day up and so. That's it.
As Angie said, it does feel like, um, every day there's sort of a new, new thing we're having to absorb and figure out. So the two kind of converging into, um, in just the last week has been, has been, um, really intense. But we're just trying to get the information out to our partners as fast as possible because we know it affects them. Um, and we know that, that, um, Chair, President Peterson has indicated another wanting a fifth meeting. It was initially supposed to be four, it's now asked for five. With the, um, the Chairs and the Counselors as well as some of the Mayor, so we will be getting updates after that.
And I, I was just thinking about that and the fact that we've talked about money at each, the follow ups to us have all been about money, not about governance, right? So I, and I have concerns about the governance structure and questions. So I'm, I'm actually happy to hear that there's another potential meeting scheduled.
Yep, so, um, I'm hearing that you guys will want to update how the conversation goes today, for next week. And then, of course, their last meeting, I believe, is right after our next work session next week too, so. Never a dull moment.
But the good fight, we all, you too.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep. Well, Anne and Laurel, thank you for your patience. Um, next topic is, we're running a little late, but. I'm here.
Thank you for having us.
Facilities Capital Project Report.
So we were last here, uh, right after I started actually back in May. Uh, and we made a commitment to all of you to come back and provide updates on where we are on our facilities plan, but also on the index. So how are we looking in terms of funding projects that were large dollar projects? Um, and so this is an update. We're happy to take notes on other items that you'd like us to look at for a future update. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Laurel.
Thank you. Um, so as Anne, uh, mentioned, this is just a, still the, I think Ms. Angie has the.
Oh, I don't want that. That's too much responsibility.
Yeah, we're over the pandemic. Next slide, next slide. Now you can control it.
That's right. It's important aspect to quality of life, I think. So here we are, um, on the agenda for today. We want to review that facilities condition index that we went over back in May. I'm going to provide a few project updates on what we have actively in the works and uh give you a overview of the current initiatives that we're working on. And as usual, I'm looking forward to a, a robust discussion and questions at the end. Um, so we talked about the facility condition index, which was a, uh, result of our, or a, yeah, result of our first facility condition assessment ever here at Washington County. And at that time, we talked about how when you consider the portfolio as a whole, the estimated cost of our deferred maintenance backlog divided by the estimated cost to replace those buildings puts the portfolio as a whole in the upper end of the poor category, uh, which is not where we want to be for very long. So we have a plan to improve that over time, uh, using existing funds. Um, at that time, I had starred a few projects on this table to highlight, um, projects that were big enough to move the needle on the FCI over time. So when these are complete, we hope that the, uh, properties that are starred will move up a little bit. Some of them could pop into the fair category, which I find exciting. Um, we also talked about some critical needs that are, uh, not yet funded but forthcoming and those are still part of our, uh, planning efforts for, including the Walnut Street Center and the plumbing system at the courthouse.
So can I just say, um, I just appreciating the Board's leadership in this. The Board used, um, two different, um, one-time funding sources to make many of these projects a reality. Um, that includes the additional, um, unexpected SIP payment, um, which your Board had authorized. In addition, using the allowable uses, um, under ARPA to improve, um, the living conditions within our congregate, uh, care facilities. Um, so without those. Um, so without those kind of unique one-time sources, this would not happen. So I just want to kind of underscore that leadership your board took, um, and also that um, opportunity of that one-time um, source.
I would sincerely like to echo that appreciation because these are big, heavy uh, lifts that we have made with your support. Uh, the Harkins, many of these first ones will be those ARPA-funded critical facility infrastructures that Ms. Angie references. Uh, the, that you have been receiving regular updates on, but maybe the general public hasn't been following quite as closely. So I'll kind of buzz through these. Um, the Harkins House is a residential facility for justice-involved youth. Uh, the project uh, that we initiated in this facility has kind of the same anticipated outcomes as all of our ARPA projects, which are to increase resiliency during future pandemics and wildfire events. Uh, reduce transmission of airborne pathogens, improve year-round comfort for residents and staff, and ensure fewer business interruptions due to mechanical failure. And they'll also accidentally result in reduced energy and maintenance costs over time. Um, this one is ninety-nine percent complete. It's been at ninety-nine percent complete for quite a minute. Uh, we had targeted July twenty twenty-four as our complete date, and we did get the system up and running. But we are now in the process of tweaking the new design on site based on existing conditions in that building. Um, and that has uh, created about a six-month delay in closeout of the project. Um, fortunately, that delay did not result in um, uh, increase in budget. We're actually gonna come in under budget on this one, uh, which is a nice surprise.
Mural related to?
It's not related to the project. It's sort of characteristic of the um, Harkins House. That's a mural that they have on site there. Um, the Justice Services Building, we're doing a very similar project with similar outcomes, uh, redesigning and replacing that HVAC system uh, for the health and safety of the occupants. This project is only three percent complete at this time. I want to point out that that percent complete is an interesting number, but one of the things it also is, is an indicator of risk. So the lower that number is, the more um, risk there is of interruption or change to our schedule or our budget, because we're still early on um, in the game. This one target is, we hope to complete in July of twenty twenty-six, which is six months in advance of the um federally mandated deadline um, to expend the ARPA dollars by December of twenty twenty-six. You can see that in this case, our budget has shifted up slightly, and that is primarily uh, due to increase in equipment costs now that we're at that uh, phase of the game. The Law Enforcement Center, another ARPA-funded critical facility infrastructure, uh, where we are doing the HVAC system in addition to uh, replacing the roof, adding jump barriers, changing out the domestic water main and supply lines, and changing out the fire detection system as well. This one is five percent complete, on track to finish in uh, June of twenty twenty-six. And uh, also experiencing some budget creep, uh, now that we're actually purchasing the equipment. Uh, Community Corrections Center, we actually have two large projects in that building right now. The first is an ARPA-funded critical facility infrastructure project, uh, HVAC-related, uh, in order to improve the uh, interior air quality for um, occupants of the building. Uh, that portion of the project is about four percent complete. Uh, we're hoping to finish that one um maybe by this spring, but we have a four twenty-six uh, deadline in case we need that, or a schedule in case we need that time. Uh, this one, the budget is going down. Uh, we had uh, originally estimated three million, but it's actually coming in closer to two million. Uh, the other thing that we are currently doing in community corrections uh, is handling a big project that was actually scheduled for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, we had to postpone that project. That was the first year when we started talking about our budget deficit and the general fund transfer for capital uh, projects was canceled. So we had to uh, postpone this correction. Uh, the bathrooms that serve the residential units have been experiencing long-term uh, water intrusion due to leaks and failed plumbing, which is just aged and beyond repair. Uh, so we have, we are sixty percent complete. You can see that this picture is how far down we've had to demo in the first two bathrooms that we're tackling now. Um, and I should say the sixty percent complete of the first two bathrooms, there will be a, other phases of this where we take on the other six bathrooms that need to be rehabbed in this building. Uh, we are on track for budget and, and schedule at this point. Um, Service Center East, this is one that we haven't talked about a lot. It is not an ARPA-funded project. Uh, this is a building out in. It is an important, um, it's an important building to the county because it's one of our east county locations uh, for uh, deli- delivering services. Right now, we have Health and Human Services out there and uh, Justice Court, as well as the Sheriff's Office East Precinct. Uh, we have a project in the works. It's actually come, a couple of projects combined. They were both uh, funded last fiscal year. And uh, they include replacing the entire building envelope. Every component of the building envelope is letting water into the building uh, through the windows, through the siding, through the roof. So we're gonna replace those. This picture kind of shows the current state of the siding, which we can no longer pressure wash because it would further compromise the system. Uh, the roof there you can see is supposed to be gray, and so all of that black is where the uh, the underlayment is wearing through. And the last little tiny picture is uh, what happens after it rains? The gray material that services, surfaces that roof actually ends up on the ground underneath the gutters. So it's, it's definitely overdue. Um, we do not ha- we haven't really started. We're still in design and cost estimation phase of this project, but what we are seeing is um, significant increases in the estimated budget. So we will be coming back to this board for uh, later for um, supplemental budget request to ensure that we can complete that. Yes.
Uh, thank you, Laurel. One second. Chair Harrington, um, I think you're unmuted. Did you wanted to say something?
Sorry.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay, okay. So those are the projects that we had underway at the time that we uh, last spoke. In addition to those projects, this ones that are starred here, we've also been queuing up a next round or already have funding for the next round of projects, which I've highlighted in green here. You can see that the majority of those investments are in the poor to critical range. There will always be the need to invest in our good and fair buildings so that we can keep them from falling into that uh, poor condition. Uh, so this is what we are working on now. And as an overview to those, this is not for you to actually read through, although I do have to correct. One of my favorite mistakes to make is in that first column, right under wingspan. It says, public safety building elevator modernization. I will send corrected materials to Kevin. That should say, public services building elevator modernization. Uh, how could any of us forget that recently completed project? So I just wanted to provide kind of an order of magnitude, understanding of the work that has been completed this year uh, is actively happening right now, and what is still pending uh, in this year's budget. We have just completed uh, or working on hiring a limited duration capital improvement manager who is going to help us tackle uh, that list of pending projects, uh, though some of them are expected to go into the next fiscal year. Um, our ongoing focus right now, as we work our way through those projects, is to uh, ensure that the county is doing what we can to uh, further our seismic resiliency. We have a project right now for assessments of all of our buildings that are gonna update our twenty-twelve seismic evaluations. We are actively uh, creating construction documents for the Walnut Street Center seismic uh, retrofit so that when material, when funding materializes, that's wishful thinking, but when it does, we'll be shovel-ready for that project. Um, we have, we are also working on strategic planning activities, including the continued maintenance of our deferred maintenance capital improvement process and planning. Uh, we are continuing to refine our five-year capital improvement plan. We're also developing space planning procedures to provide more transparency to departments and better tools for engagement. I mean, we're also working on building efficiencies and external revenue streams within the uh, division that include creating a warehousing and inventory management system that we did not have prior. Um, and the active solicitation of external funds, which include uh, the funding sources that are listed here. The DOJ Burn Grant that we received because of Aaron Doyle's group's good uh, work, the nine hundred thousand dollars is gonna go towards our LEC critical facility infrastructure. Uh, Carl Schweitzer has been here to talk about the next two, the Oregon Parks and Recreation Board and Explore Twelton Valley. Those are both gonna be capital improvement projects for us. And then the Oregon Department of Transportation, uh, we have successfully uh, applied for sixty-six thousand dollar grant from them to help us expand our uh, electric vehicle infrastructure. That is it. Very quick. Does anyone have any questions or requests for additional information?
Thank you, Laurel. And I think um, uh, the chair sent you a question, so we'll start with you, Tanya. Go ahead.
Okay, so this uh, question is coming from Chair Harrington, um, and this is relative to the jail.
Okay.
Um, and specific to the elevators. Uh, when um, when do we, and I'm looking at the FCI, and I know we categorize based on building, but specific, can you speak to the elevators and improvements in the elevators so that they are in good working condition?
I can, I would really appreciate the time to go back to my desk and look that up in comparison to our other elevators that are uh, on the list. We had some years ago, maybe three or four um, brought in a consultant to do a, a comparative assessment of all of our elevators, and I can provide you with that detailed information.
Okay, so the answer to that question, I'll be in a follow-up email to the board on the state of elevators in our county portfolio. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll go in the.
Can I ask my other question?
Yes.
Yeah, totally. You're unmuted. Yeah, go for it.
Um, I'm looking at a copy of the slides that I was able to print on Friday. So I don't know if the presentation was updated, but there, um, I don't have a slide number, but it's the second uh, copy of the one titled Results.
Okay.
That has the building table off to the right with green lines.
I guess.
What do those green lines mean?
The green shaded buildings are projects in addition to the starred projects, which were in progress already when we last talked about this. These are uh, additional projects that are on the move now.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
And other than that, I'll just say, I was looking at the ongoing focus slide. Thank you very much uh, for the work that that slide indicates. Uh, really, really good work. We know a lot more than we knew last year, and certainly in any of the years that I've been on the board. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. You're welcome.
Question, comment?
Thank you.
Thumbs up for me. A good job.
Thank you.
I do, actually I do have a comment. I think it's really interesting that we had our legislative breakfast at the bottom of the list at Walnut Street.
That was good timing.
Yeah, we're very smart.
It's like it was planned.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we're on time for a break now, so thank you to you both. Very streamlined, a very succinct presentation. Thank you. Um, do we want to take a break or do we want to continue?
Um, I would ask that we actually take a break to ensure that our presenters are here.
Under your, okay. Sounds great. So fifteen minutes?
Great.
I'll sign off.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're on time for a break now, so thank you to you both. Very streamlined, a very succinct presentation. Thank you. Do we want to take a break, or do we want to continue?
I would ask that we actually take a break to ensure that our presenters are here.
Under your, okay. Sounds great. So 15 minutes?
Great.
I'll sign off. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks.
All right. Welcome back. Chair, it's back to you, Chair Fox.
Well, our presenters are ready. And Ashley, welcome.
Do you want to do an introduction, Tanya, or should we just kind of do?
Well, the board does hear from Lisa Tackage, our Chief Human Resources Officer. The board has a privilege, and I'm honored to also introduce Ashley Horn, who works within the OEICE OEICE office. Sometimes I stumble over that acronym. And her title is Policy Manager. Ashley has been with the county for two-plus years, and Ashley has really a rich history working at GEAR, which is the government alliance on race and equity, working with jurisdictions across the country, advancing racial equity. In addition to work with federal, state government, and also tribal communities, and I'm sure I forgot a lot more. But really glad that her and Lisa partnered on bringing the bilingual pay policy to your board. And I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you. Thank you for that lovely introduction. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start us off, but I will say that Ashley and I are co-presenting, so we'll be passing back and forth between the slides depending on our relevant areas. And I want to just acknowledge that we are in this area of transition when it comes to adoption of new personnel policies and effective, I think it's December 19th, then your board had delegated through that code change, that authority to the county administrator. We are presenting to you this afternoon, and we do have this item slated for the December 17th consent agenda for your approval and adoption. If for some reason we don't make that mark, then we'll be in that new era post-December 19th and probably have the county administrator move to adoption. But either way, this is a very valuable conversation. This is an area of great interest, and so however the approval occurs, we're happy to be presenting to you today and sharing this information. So with that, I'll kick us off with our first formal slide. And a little bit about what we'll be reviewing in the upcoming slides. We're going to talk about how this work is anchored in the various commitments we have through compliance and language access, and also our organization's mission and vision, and our One Washington County, how we work better together. These principles helped guide the development of this policy update. We'll also review the robust process and lengthy process that was undertaken to achieve the changes to this policy, and also some ancillary work that we'll talk about later in the presentation. And then we'll talk about not only what's changed in the policy as to the amount of compensation, but also who is eligible, has expanded. And then I'll pass it over to Ashley.
Thank you, Lisa. And so I get to talk about some of our anchoring commitments here. And you see our One Washington County vision and mission proudly displayed up on the screen. I really wanted to highlight the guiding principles of equity and inclusion, and that we're a human-centered organization, and you'll see that really come to life in the update that we're proposing. Also, you may recall in August, we did bring forward an improved framework for the work that we do in our equity diversity and inclusion work. And really, the main outcome areas that were emphasized in that presentation is that this work is about access, belonging, and closing disparities. And we understand that language access work, working in bilingual or multilingual ways to serve community is part of this important piece of access. We cannot ensure that all the communities we serve have access unless we do so in a linguistically accessible manner. And so there's a big, big piece there playing out. Also, the sense of belonging. We worked extensively with bilingual and multilingual staff to understand what their experiences are providing language access services and want to attend to some of the need for belonging there. And then third, well, I think most importantly in this work, we want to close disparities and ensure that no matter how we identify, we're all thriving and benefiting from the services provided. And so closing disparities, we can't do that unless we first ensure access. So that's the connection there. And then we wanted to share just briefly, we know that you've seen this before, but just as a reminder, because we are the recipient of federal funding, we are required to provide language access services. And most of the time, people emphasize the interpretation and translation piece of that, which is hugely important. And then there's the secondary piece that's also important that we're addressing in this policy, in this policy update. It has to do with bilingual staff. We are supposed to have bilingual staff who can assure that these services are provided in a culturally and linguistically appropriate manner, and that's a big part of this. We also just want to center that we want to provide community-minded service. We have community in mind as public servants, and that's a huge driving factor here. Back to you, Lisa.
Thank you. And so an overview of what's changed in this policy update. Primarily, we're moving away from a flat rate of payment to a percentage base of pay. We're doing that for several reasons. One is for consistency. And another is that the type of methodology we're using is the same that we administer other areas of compensation for specialized skills. This also prevents compensation from becoming stagnant. The percentage base allows for an employee's compensation to grow with increases to their salaries for cost of living and for merit. And I want to note that this is an iterative process, and so while we're making improvements through this increased rate of pay and how we compensate on that percent basis, the work in this area is evolving, and we'll be continuing the conversation around it to align what the county's processes are in this regard to the needs of the employee and the community. And this largely has to do with the feedback that was received from bilingual employees, and we'll talk a little bit further on that in future slides. Yeah.
I suspect all of us have had this presentation, and you've met with all of us.
Yes.
What happens if somebody speaks multiple languages? I didn't ask you that.
I did.
Yes, someone did. Right now, the way the update is set up is there's no additional compensation for additional languages spoken, although we have heard the question. It did come up in our analysis. Yes.
And that is true. And so that's an interesting point. I would be curious, I haven't actually looked to see if we have employees who have tested and proven to be proficient in multiple languages, but as the policy reads currently and in this update, that they're compensated either the flat rate currently, or the update proposes 5% of base salary. Or the language skill. It doesn't.
Clean water dude, you know.
I'm sorry?
It was clean water dude. I didn't ask that.
I don't know specifically.
I don't know either.
Okay. We could certainly look and provide you that.
I didn't think about the multilingual portion of it, so I'm glad. For posterity reasons, I know you said this to me in my briefing, or our briefing, so I don't remember who I was with, but the fixed rate, we're moving from that to percentage. But from what I remember from my briefing, as you said, if the compensation does not, is less than $75, people will get still $75.
That's correct.
And you explained it better than I just did, so please.
You explained it well, well and on point. So we moved towards the 5%, and we'll review this based on best benchmarking and remaining competitive in the market. But then Ashley brought up a very good point about what about classifications that their salary rate, the 5% would be less than $75. And so we put the floor language in there of the $75 as a minimum in case that happens. And we ran a report, all employees who are currently receiving bilingual pay, when we ran it at 5%, their salaries, all of them will be benefiting from them. There's not one that would hit the floor or be less. But there are classifications at the county where that could happen if they were ever to be designated as bilingual.
Some reasons that we wanted to share with you. Hopefully, it's coming through. We're committed to effectively serving the communities that we're responsible for serving. And we did meet with bilingual staff, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And we really want to lift up the feedback and thank people for participating and engaging with us. And want to be responsive to what we heard from staff. And then this update does align with the board's commitments in the 2020 Equity Resolution. There is a piece in there with the commitment that our workforce reflects the communities that we serve, and so And so this update does help us do that so that we're able to employ and retain bilingual staff who can serve the linguistically diverse communities that are in our catchment area.
Other reasons for this update is that the policy is overdue for an update. The compensation component was last updated in 2007. Prior to that, the employees were receiving $30 per pay period. And in 27, sorry, 2007, it was updated to $55 per pay period. There was a brief update in 2012 that we learned of, and that was just to address some of the testing components. But the compensation at that time remained the same. There was an interim, interim step that was taken, increasing the compensation from the $55 rate to $75 per pay period. And that was in 2022, when we engaged in this policy update work. And at that time, it was very clear that our compensation rate was low. And so that interim step was taken. We want to extend appreciation and acknowledge your board's action in that regard, supporting the interim increase of compensation to bilingual staff while we were able to engage and conduct this comprehensive review. Also, previously touched upon, other reasons to update the policy is, are to align it with HR best practices and how we compensate employees. And also, from a recruitment and retention standpoint, remaining competitive with our comparators and how we compensate for bilingual skills. And then finally, also, to ensure that we have the workforce that has these skills so that we can support the service to the community. And so this update supports all of those aspects.
We have a timeline here. We've actually addressed some of the things that we've plotted along this timeline, but just wanted to highlight some things we haven't yet shared, that we did engage in a crosswalk analysis in looking at similar policies in other jurisdictions and agencies. And that work began in the beginning of 2022. And then we began our extensive engagement with bilingual staff, and that carried out in the summer of 2022. That also included three sessions with managers and supervisors. And we did talk about the interim increase. Thank you, Lisa, for covering that. And then you see in 2023, 2024, we did experience some transitions in leadership. So just wanted to acknowledge the impacts on timeline when that occurs. But it may have been a gift, in a way, with some of the things, because it gave us an opportunity to align the draft updates that we had with some of the HR strategic initiatives. So it actually, I think the policy is stronger as a result. And now here we are in December, right before you in this work session.
Also, part of the process is conducting a crosswalk analysis, which included benchmarking our compensation rate against the rates of those of our comparable agencies in the region. And the compensation rate was shown to be the lowest in our region. So we, so we are outliers in that regard, and also by the method by which we pay it, and that's that flat rate versus the percentage rate. And so those informed our process and influenced these policy updates. Then, you know, again, looking to those HR best practices and creating that consistency across the county and how we compensate employees for similar specialized skills.
We wanted to lift up some of the engagement with staff who contributed significantly to this effort. We conducted an anonymous interview to understand where some gaps and opportunities are in our language access services. And in that, we had 185 bilingual staff participate from 17 departments. We also conducted 26 listening sessions, all work shifts, all schedules, so night, weekend, et cetera. We had 120 bilingual staff participate in those. So just, this is really the thank you slide. Thank you for bilingual staff, for your wisdom, your, your trust in us and engaging with us as we move through this process. And we really, we really appreciate all the things that were lifted up.
And so as you can see through the course of the presentation tonight, the policy is focused on compensation. There's also the, you know, the eligibility variable. Our employees were added to the list of employees that are eligible. And through the feedback that Ashley mentioned, there are a lot of different components that weren't addressed in this policy. And so this slide is our commitment to share what are our, what our ideas are in furthering this work to address holistically the concerns that were brought forth. And so HR and OEICE are working in partnership to address these. And it circles back to Ashley's previous comment about some of the new initiatives that are being worked up in HR. One of them is the Job Description Project. And we feel that the Job Description Project will help inform some new ideas and different ways of approaching concerns that were raised regarding how we compensate for designated positions. We don't compensate people, we compensate the, compensate the people, but it's through designated positions and that, whether an employee is bilingual or not. And also to address workload and the employee experience around how they engage in bilingual work with translation and interpretive services. And so understanding what that looks like for each employee will come through, hopefully, this Job Description Project. Also, there were concerns around eligibility. Right now, we use a 20% threshold as a marker for whether or not an employee is eligible for this compensation. And there was a lot of feedback around that and a lot of different ways that were proposed. And so I think as we learn more about how bilingual employees engage in their work, maybe we can reexamine that in a future iteration of this policy. Also, another initiative is learning and development. And so we can support supervisors of bilingual staff to understand that bilingual experience, maybe have like an experiential type program for them. There's some concerns that were raised around quality control. And so helping supervisors and bilingual employees alike understand when, when and who may be the best resource to utilize for translation and interpretive services. And so in certain circumstances, it may be the bilingual employee, and others, it might be technical, technical or specialized content where it would be better to bring in a translation and interpretation service, knowing that's available and when to utilize that. There are separate policies under language access that are being developed to help inform in that regard. Also, we can help educate on leave. Some feedback that came forward is that it's difficult for a bilingual employee to take leave, either for sick or vacation, if they're the only bilingual employee in the work group. And so educating supervisors on other resources they may be able to harness to, to fill in that gap so that employees can take their, their leave as needed. And then finally, to address concerns that came up about making mistakes and how that may lead to liability, whether to the county or personally. And so helping educate that first mistakes happen. It happens in all areas of work, not just bilingual work. And so this is no different, and that we, we address mistakes in a similar, similar fashion. But also that, to educate that the county does have appropriate insurance policies in place that respond to any negligent acts, just like, again, in other, in any other areas of work that the, that the county engages in. And so between these two initiatives in HR, we're hoping to continue this work and express our commitment to it and help further these. And so that brings us to our policy question. And welcome, questions, comments?
Thank you. And welcome, Ashley. You have an extensive experience and background. I really enjoyed hearing. Thank you, Tanya, for sharing that background of Ashley. And thank you for that presentation. Questions?
I didn't ask, I only met the other day briefly. Yet, is bilingual only oral? Or could it be other things?
It's written and verbal or oral. And some, some staff who utilize their bilingual skills deploy both because of the type of work that they do. And some may just need to, to engage in conversation and not in writing.
Conversation's fine, writing is fine, sign language?
That's what's addressed in this policy.
No. You're saying no?
Correct.
Why would that be?
I would think because of the language access requirements and under safe harbor.
So if you're speaking to somebody who, English wasn't their native language, and they really were deaf, they needed an interpreter, that interpreter doesn't qualify for this program?
The, the person who needs the supports wouldn't be able to be supported. This is specific to compensation of staff we're using.
I understand. It would be the person on the staff who would have the ability to sign in another language.
And so signing, that, that would be an interesting problem-solving technique. And so the sign language interpreter would be under title two of the ADA and providing a reasonable accommodation for access to government services and programs. And so I think it would be that in conjunction with a bilingual employee and probably both deployed to help with that interpretation.
Checklist of things to think about down the way.
Yeah.
Not, but it's, you'll run into it, anything that, yeah. I always look for anomalies, something is gonna happen. Somebody says, well, how come I don't get paid? I'm on call to do these.
In our crosswalk analysis, we did, did see examples where there's com, different compensation for folks who speak more than one or proficient in more than one additional language. So they're multilinguals that are bilingual. And we also saw ASL. One of the things that we are noticing here is that 20% use of language threshold and whether that would actually, if we would meet that with staff. But definitely more to consider as we, this is iterative and so many complexities that we would like to address.
Evergreen product, I guess.
Yes.
I wanted to say thank you for your presentation. Thank you for taking the time that you both did with me in the, in the briefing. I, I really, I, I've worked with Lisa. I really appreciate your approach. It was my first opportunity to work with you, Ashley. And you did a great job in the briefing. I felt like I could ask questions. You understood what I was asking. You, you appropriately told me when, well, we'll get there. But also, I just want to give you some very positive feedback. So thank you for bringing Ashley along, and thank you for your work. I'm very supportive of this policy. I, I want to see some of the issues as we move forward, how it works out in relationship to, as salaries escalate, does the percentage of time spent in bilingual activities escalate? Even the questions I asked you while we were talking. But I'm really pleased that we're doing this. I'm pleased we're doing it in relationship to and with the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. I think that that's important. So thank you. And I'm a yes.
Oh, yeah, I already told you.
I, I, I'm a thumbs up here as well. And I think I asked you all your, all my questions. I am, I got a little concerned about what I heard from you, Lisa, about the, the Civil Rights Act of, like, the definition here. It says linguistically appropriate service delivery. So I think ASL will fit in, American Sign Language will fit into that. So I'm not sure we, I don't, I don't know if we have the right. I'm interpreting this act, and I have the, I think if you could go back, I think it's slide number five. The definition, it's there. And I think you pivoted towards the ADA accommodation, which is different, because I think the ADA is a physical barriers and whatnot. So I, I think when you do come back on the 17th, I think maybe county council, this is your area. We need to clarify how sign language fits into this because it's a language. It's not, it's not, yeah, it's not an ADA accommodation. It's rather language, linguistically appropriate services here. So I don't know how we address that piece. But that was a glaring concern for me. As my own household, we're multilingual, and one of them is a sign language. So as well as other, so I think when you do come back, the definition you provided, just clarify for that. I don't think, we have time, Lisa, nothing to be alerted about. And then the, the, the thing.
If I, if I can just add to that request, we'll add a slide in just for members of the community too. And a reminder for your board, just listing out the safe harbor languages. So we'll just add a bit of content there. Just, once again, as the refresher and also to answer that question.
And then the, the other thing that I forgot to mention when you were in my briefing, when you going over the timelines of what happened. I forgot to ask, like, where does inflation fit in in this? Right, like, 1996, $30, we're 75. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, so. Can I answer that? If you look at this timeline, you look at 90, 1996 was the 30, then 55 in 2007. There was that gap in time between 2022, when I brought to your board, the 55 to 75. So that, that, the 55 to 75, the why behind that, we looked at what CPI and COLA was in that period of time to determine the 75, just as that placeholder, till we got to a policy. The 5% helps assure that this is, that, that we're modern in the pay or in that's keeping up with the inflation. Because just as the salary will increase, that 5% will increase, where that, a flat rate does not change with inflation. So this, this proposed policy keeps up with it.
With the inflation, okay. I forgot to mention that. Wait a minute. So thank you. Thank you, Tanya, for that background information. So did I, you had a point about clean water services and conversation. I know you got looped into the beginning of this conversation.
Yeah, I have a partial answer.
Right.
I pulled up our teamsters' contract, so this is only for represented staff.
We have a mic on you, do you have the mic, please?
So we have a monthly premium of $125 will be paid to employees in positions performing work where there is a business need for bilingual proficiency as determined by the district. And that's really what the contract says.
And Joe, could you say your name for the record?
I'm Joe Gall. I'm Chief Utility Relations Officer for Clean Water Services. And I also followed up with HR to see if there's a different rate for non-reps. So we'll be back just as a quick comparison.
Thank you. Okay, thumbs up. We'll see you on the 17th.
Thank you very much.
The next agenda item is Board and Leadership Communication. And then let's touch base on, I'm so glad it's added here, the formal agenda item discussion. So let's touch base. Thank you, Kevin. So we'll start with Board and Leadership Communication. And let's do what Commissioner Rogers does usually and start with the leadership team. So Jill, I'm looking at you. Go for it, for Clean Water Services.
Thank you. I'll be brief, I have one item. So good afternoon, Vice Chair Fai and SBA's Board of Directors. As we are heading into the close of the year, I just wanted to give you a heads up that we are very close to publishing our annual report for fiscal year 2023, 24. It's a great opportunity to look back at what we were able to accomplish last year, including cleaning over 26 billion gallons of water last fiscal year and sweeping 12,000 miles of streets. Lots of data facts in that report you'll be seeing. You should expect the report to land in your inboxes in the next week or so. We're shooting for the 17th to deliver it. We'll also be sharing it with our city partners, community organizations, members of our state and federal delegation, and of course, with our broader community. And our annual report is an electronic report. We don't produce a paper version anymore. It's an electronic document that will be sent out. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with an LUT focus and then also have to talk a bit about budget.
I was wondering.
So first, while I'm speaking, let's have our LUT team, Karen and team. So first, I actually want to take a moment and celebrate our LUT staff. So we don't always get kudos relative to permitting activities. We don't. So I want to share a note that was received by Marnie Kyle and asking to share with our LUT department. And I wanted to take the opportunity to also share it with the board. So I'm gonna read this. "We bought a house in Tigard, Portland, Metzger area, Washington County jurisdiction, and we're doing a bit of remodeling before we can move in. We knew it would be up to eight to 12 weeks to get our permits, just to get the demo started. My husband and our architect went in today and walked out with permits in our hand in less than 90 minutes. I'm stunned and so stoked. Our architect is from California and has worked with other local counties, but not as experienced as Washington County. He said he's absolutely blown away by how well this was managed and passed along his gratefulness that there is an option so residents don't have to wait for three months. Every single person at the counter was super friendly and went above and beyond. I really want to make sure they get a shout out." So I want to share this shout out too, because as your board knows, we have made So I want to share this shout out too, because as your board knows, we have made significant, your board has authorized significant permit fee increases. And LUT team and permit team has done just yeoman's work about of changing the curve. So sometimes we don't always get the accolades of the shout out of good customer service. So I just want to take that opportunity to share. Also, sitting next to Erin Wordell, and this is my first opportunity to meet you in person too. So I get to welcome you. So next to Erin is Carol Johnson. Carol is our Planning and Development Services Manager, joined LUT on November 25th. She was most recently the Planning Director for a consulting firm in Redwood City, California. Before that, she was the Land Use and Planning Director for Multnomah County, where she was responsible for current planning, long range planning and code compliance. Carol has led Planning and Development Service teams in other counties and cities. So welcome, Carol. And then please let me know if I pronounce this incorrectly. Ailey Langford, Senior Administrative Manager, most recently served as the Business Operations and Contract Manager with the Oregon Department of Transportation and Urban Mobility Office. She also served in business management roles for several Portland and Hillsborough based companies. And she started with LUT on November 4th. So you will see Ailey at budget meetings and other meetings as well. So just welcome. And I know Erin Wordell is smiling from ear to ear, especially with Carol starting so that she can really step into her assistant director job. Welcome. Yeah, any comments?
Just that I am so grateful to be here in Washington County and joining this team that is doing such good work. The reputation of Washington County pursues itself in a very positive way. And so I'm very happy to be a member of the team.
Same. Very proud to be here. The team has been great so far. Just really enjoy everyone. So looking forward to what's to come.
Welcome.
Thank you for being.
Welcome and good luck to you. And kudos for stealing stuff from ODOT. Especially as we got into the 2025 legislative session and with the transportation package. And Carol, welcome as well. Thank you.
So then shifting gears to budget, I just want to thank the board for your conversation during roundtable, continued conversation on budget. On Friday was our internal budget kickoff. I believe there were close to 100 staff on the call and that's when we internally opened the budget. I gave a similar overview of similar slides that your board had seen during the roundtable. Today I did share an all employee message with the employees and just for members of the public that may be listening. I do want to touch on that all employee message. So our ability to balance the general fund continues to be constrained by our limited property taxes and other discretionary revenues, which no longer cover our growing expenses. This ongoing challenge means the cost of services is outpacing our ability to fund them through the general fund. We're also facing challenges with some of our special funds, but for now I'm going to focus on the general fund in this message. The initial general fund forecast for fiscal year 2526 shows a $20.5 million gap between revenues and expenditures. About half of this, or 9.9 million, is due to anticipated increases in expenses like health insurance and retirement costs. The other half results from the expiration of a 2005 Strategic Investment Program Agreement, which caused a $10.6 million drop in the transfer from the SIP Fund to the general fund. To balance the general fund, we will need to make difficult reductions together for the fourth consecutive year. Departments and offices will be asked to submit reduction scenarios at 10, 13 and 17% levels. After multiple rounds of cuts, our options are limited. We must reassess the resources and services we provide, including those mandated by law. In some cases, we may need to do less with less. In other services may be reluctantly eliminated. Eliminated where available funding can no longer support staff and materials required to be sustainable. Unfortunately, we cannot rule out layoffs for the general fund supported positions. While we don't know where these cuts may occur, they will be openly discussed during our 2526 budget process with the Budget Committee and the Board of Commissioners. I recognize the frustration of reoccurring budget projections and cuts. Despite our challenges, I plan to prepare and propose a responsible and sustainable budget and protect as many employees as possible. I also commit to you, I commit to transparency with you, our partners, governments, community based organizations and the public we serve. We are in the early stages of the 2526 budget process and I will keep you updated at key milestones, starting with employee information sessions early next year. Details soon will follow. So I wanted to take the opportunity to actually read that out loud. So it is part of the formal leadership update. And your board is scheduled at your January roundtable to discuss communication strategy that will extend through this budget process. And that concludes my update.
Thank you, Tanya. Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair Phi, Commissioners. I kind of want to circle back to one of our first topic today and the work being and highlight and raise up a little bit of the incredible work from how the Housing Department in support with Jackie Sado from my off, from our office, from County Council's office and Marnie Kyle. We've communicated with you that we got our first funding agreement for the first Washington County Access Center over the finish line late last week. This is a really critical component of our continued service to our unhoused, unsheltered community here in Washington County. This is a place where people can go to have hygiene services, navigation services, other wraparound services and supports like transportation and even a meal. So it's really important and something to be celebrated. There won't be much celebrating though, as they are continuing to work very diligently on the next access center, which we hope to close either this week or next, I believe. So good work by all involved there. I also just wanted to mention, we, the Office of County Council will be having our holiday celebration and merry making at the end of the week. It is after hours, but we might be leaving a little bit early to get things set up where we've rented a space from the City of Hillsborough. So thank you to the city. So we can celebrate the good work this year together. Thank you. And that's it for me.
Okay, board, board members, our turn now.
Okay, I'm happy to go next. Thank you. So last week I had to check in with our auditor, an impact coordinating committee meeting. And at those coordinating committee meetings, we talk about what the schedules coming up for the next few months are. And a big part of the meeting was about transitioning me from being the chair to Brett Sherman, who will be the chair. And then there'll be a nomination for the cycle from the Washington County for the next person to be second place chair. We are expecting a discussion on the cooling corridors proposal that Metro is putting forward. So there, we've, I've got some good questions from Jessica Pels and from Stephen regarding what work has already been done and is it duplicative work, that type of thing. So looking forward to the meeting. I, yet, we also had our legislative breakfast in our most critical facility. I might, I had good work for funding. It was a really good meeting. I was disappointed that we didn't have more legislators there, but we still, we still got to staff. And to me, that's, that's probably the sweet spot anyway. And I really appreciate the work that the GR team did and bringing it together along with Grace. Thank you for planning the event. Thank you for getting everything put together. The, let's see. Oh, and also after that same day on that morning, I went along with Commissioner Phi to the Tri-County's 50th Anniversary Celebration of the WIC program, right here in our offices. It's good, good to see. Yesterday I got to attend the Oregon Leadership Summit at the Convention Center. Commissioner Willie was there, Commissioner Phi was there. And there were the regular, regular cast of characters where there, there are many, many electeds, business leaders and, you know, all sorts of folks. I think some of the key messages I walked away with in the morning was there is a lot of discussion about taxation in what keeps being referred to as the metropolitan area. But the taxes that are referred to are Multnomah County taxes. So it was an interesting discussion, especially in light of what we're looking at with our SHS funding. So there was also a lot of discussion around projected economic growth for this region and for it being leveling off a bit. That's why I also, we also had representation there from LUT. It was a, it was, they were good, they were good discussions, especially for me in the morning. In the afternoon, I went to the swearing in of Senator Lisa Reynolds. And that was, it was very well done. She's very excited. And there were many representatives from the House and from the Senate, along with the governor there. And the, our new treasurer, Treasurer Steiner, and our new Secretary of State Tobias Reed. So it was, that was, that was very good. Tomorrow I have the Library Levy Steering Committee meeting. And that'll be followed by the last impact meeting of this year that I mentioned earlier. We will be getting an addition of update on SHS funding from Lynn Peterson. Now I've asked for that directly, that it come from Lynn, not from staff and not from other counselors. Because I think at this point in time, it's really important for the impact members to hear directly from the president. So we'll, we'll see how, how that information moves forward. I also didn't mention that we'll be taking on, taking action on the Montgomery Park Title IV map, which is really pertinent to the city of Portland, not so much to us. And then on Thursday, I have my last PAP meeting of the year. So we can refer to that.
Mine isn't quite as illustrious. Everything is starting to taper down a bit. I have a couple of meetings coming up, one with BAC and 12, and one with the Board of Directors. At a number of people reach out and say goodbye. That's always nice. So that's pretty customary, I think. Beyond that, I don't think I have too much to report. So I'll leave it at that.
I'm gonna, may I add one more thing?
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm not sure that Commissioner Rogers know all, knows all of what's going on in the background. But Commissioner Willie and I are working with a larger team of people on an event for January 16th in your honor. So, and I'm.
Necessary.
Well, it's gonna be fun. And we're getting names from all sorts of folks. But I really wanted to encourage you to make sure that you let us know who's important for you to have there.
Well, I've been out here long enough that most of the people I've served with, that are, they're, half of them are no longer around, unfortunately. That's unfortunate part. It'd be nice if I could bring some of those folks back.
They can be mentioned.
Yeah, well, they all played a vital role. We all stepped, we all stand on the shoulders of those before us. And most important people to me, frankly, have been and always will be the staff. Whether we all, there's only three of us sitting here. We're really talking heads who cut ribbons and say nice things with points that they produce about work that they did. And we can set a tone, but they're the most important people, Pam. Honestly, thank you.
Read with you 100%. And you know what? In fact, just had some of those discussions today about invitees. So, so you might, you might help us a little bit too. I know it's not, you know, you've been very gracious about this, but.
I'm not into those things normally, but okay. Thank you for.
You don't have a choice on this.
You told me to.
And, and.
I'll win your traction, Roy.
What I really want you to hear from, from me, and I would, I believe I represent Jerry as well, is that everyone is so pleased to put the time and the effort in to make this something. That you will be.
Necessary, but thank you.
Very, very, very appropriate. So.
Okay, I won't say anything.
Next, next week, you have to come with prepared speech now.
Nope.
That's pretty disingenuous. I can't speak from my heart.
Oh, okay. Well, let me reiterate, let me rephrase it.
Okay.
Next week, come with speech.
Come with your heart.
Even better. Come with your heart and speak from your heart.
Let me be sick next week.
Yeah, Roy, we're, I can't believe. 40 years, yeah.
Tell you the most interesting thing for me, I came out here as a young, very young commissioner. And leaving not very young, having seen some pretty incredible things. Most of it being that we were an agricultural community, timber. Much, much smaller. And we all get blessed in different ways. What I got blessed with is serving during a time of huge transition to an economic engine of the state of Oregon. And I saw it all. I saw it all. And how many people get the privilege to do that? And how many people get the privilege to serve with people who are really, really good at what they did and with staff who are really, really good? Regardless of what we may think in 2024, 25. And it, it's easy to play the game after the game's already been played. You know, it can always be wonderful following the game on Monday after it was played Sunday. I, I think people played with their hearts, with their best thoughts. I would extend that to our city partners as well. A lot of great mayors out there, a lot of great city council people who helped us do this. This wasn't by us alone. It was with them too. Anyway, I'll stop. Move on. This is mine, it's your.
It was me, it was me.
Yeah.
Commissioner Trish took us down the memory lane. I'm excited for your party.
You're excited for.
I, I, yeah, and I'm invited.
Oh, were you on the, oh, I think you were.
Okay, I'll go next. Thank you for your patience. I went to that summit. I really enjoyed that summit. I don't think I went last year. But this year I was able to attend and I really enjoyed the speakers and I really appreciated the governor's message. I think there was a special call out to be kind to the city of Portland. And tying the success of Oregon to the success of cities. So hence why I was like, where's the city money allocation for a supportive housing services? How's that gonna balance? So it's gonna be interesting to see what city allocations and city play out in the higher level of conversation. In terms of what I got going on on my calendar, one thing that I wanted to raise for the board is usually I would have been telling you what happened at WCCC because WCCC technically should have been yesterday. But the mayors and the members of the, the WCCC met and sort of had a robust discussion about like, the summit is happening this day, what should we do? And it was decided by the group to move it. So all that to say, WCCC is happening Wednesday of this week. And in terms of what's on the agenda, a lot of informational item discussions, nothing for board decisions. But just wanted to raise that to your awareness that WCCC is still happening this month. It's just tomorrow. Wow, tomorrow is Wednesday.
Yes.
So tomorrow, don't mind. I keep saying, okay. And that concludes my update for now. And let's check on the agenda items. Anything, we only have one action item, which is appointment contract.
Can I comment on something that occurred last week real quickly on the agenda? I think it's important. There was a challenge, whether or not somebody, thank you, I tend to say that. There was a challenge whether somebody could, can speak twice. And it was Bob Terry, former commissioner, he said, well, I can speak twice. He's, he was absolutely right, but he was incorrect on. And I have told him this, by the way. You can't speak on the same topic. So he could come and speak five minutes under one topic and come back two or. So, uh, he could come and speak five minutes under one topic, and come back two, or be two within five, I mean, he had unrelated topics. You've seen Dale Feek, you've seen others do that, but he had the same topic, and he was trying to speak on the same topic. And the reason I bring that up as you're sharing tonight is, if somebody says, well, I want my two minutes, and I wanna come back, and I wanna speak about the same thing for five minutes. Uh, we've always had that, so we didn't give people seven minutes on the agenda, especially if they signed up first, and you have a thirty-minute time limit, or ten minutes, I mean, they could, they could take most of that, take the thirty and the ten forty, one person would take seven of that, you know, that's, most of these. So you could have three or four people who would dominate, so, anyway, I just point that out.
Thank you, um, we, I was gonna ask Courtney if you could, for the record, just, could you clarify some points here, what's in the procedure around the two-minute versus the two, five minutes? And you could just read the, for the record.
Commissioner Phi, give me one second.
Yeah.
So, uh, oral communication with your board is set forth in section nine of your Rules of Procedure. It allows for, um, an opportunity for communications from the public. At the start of the meeting, comments are limited to two minutes per person and a maximum of ten minutes total. Um, and no comments are allowed on items that are scheduled for a public hearing on your agenda. Um, at the conclusion of the regular business, limited to five minutes per person and a maximum of thirty minutes total. Uh, this period, uh, may include communications on agenda items for which no period of public testimony was provided. Uh, so anything essentially that they'd like to speak on to you. It then provides, and we've covered this rule before, that, um, the presiding officer may limit the time and number of appearance people appearing and testifying before you, um, um, uh, in the interest of facilitating the orderly business of the board, unless a majority of your board overrules providing, uh, presiding officer. Um, it then allows, again, the presiding officer to, um, uh, it's, excuse me, let me rephrase that, uh, except for public comment period, that is that thirty minutes at the end, limited to five minutes, the presiding officer, uh, can pr- provide for the, sort of the conditions on which the testimony will occur, except for that five-minute period, um, and will be permitted only on the invitation of the presiding officer, and on other terms contained within the invitation, which I believe is where your rule, your practice of choosing not on the same topic at both, both public comment period opportunities, so that, as Commissioner Rogers, Rogers, um, summarized quite well, so that the maximum opportunity for people to speak with you on topics is provided.
And don't we have, um, I thought we also had a rule about, uh, if you're speaking for a group.
Yes.
You have ten minutes.
So, Commissioner Trice, those are, those rules are actually, um, when you're in a public hearing, not in, yes, public hearing testimony, not your general two-minute beginning and end testimony.
I thought it was for every, oh, just for, cool.
I suppose you as a majority, or your, a presiding officer could consider allowing that, but you would still probably be constrained to your ten and thirty minutes, so you'd be, again, limiting the time available for multiple voices to be heard.
Thank you. And, okay, last question, as the agenda item, anything, I didn't hear the formal agenda, anything we wanna pull out of. Right?
Wonderful.
We are adjourned, this work session is adjourned.
And Chair Harrington is going to be off.